Please stand as Reverend Christopher Williams, Yorktown Baptist Church leads us in invocation and remain standing afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. Reverend Christopher, we come asking your blessing upon the city.
Upon the city council. Well, I ask God that you would guide our hearts, our mind, our tongues as we discuss the things that are necessary to make this city run smoothly. God, we ask you a blessing upon each council member and each officer that holds an office in this city. Forgive us now of our sins and wrongdoings. We ask to sing your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice President Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Small. Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Certainly happy to see you to every one of you. The rules of the council are quite simple. We ask that you turn off all electronic devices before or upon entering the council meeting. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, we ask that you state clearly both your name and your address. If you'd like to speak on a non-agenda item, we request that you contact the City Clerk's office no later than 2:00 PM on the Thursday preceding the council meeting you'd like to speak. Any person who has not given proper notice to the clerk's office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item will not be allowed to address the council. We allow five minutes for each presenter to speak. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes. One minute remains for summarizing, and the second bell indicates that your time has expired, and we ask that you would take your seat expeditiously. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to me, the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, we ask that there be no undue applause and/or public outcry as we move forward with this meeting. Again, welcome, and thank you for your interest in your local government.
Approval of minutes of the meeting of April 24th. Salmo.
Second.
Problem motion and second in a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minnesota approved.
Communications from the mayor.
Well, good morning. It's good to see everybody here this morning. Just a couple of remarks this morning. Yesterday, for those that maybe did not see the media broadcast about it, we stood in front of a house that was just recently constructed on State Street. It was replacing the drug den that had operated for over forty years there that was torn down a couple of years ago. It was very exciting to stand there with those that were involved in that process. Michael Pierce and his organization actually constructed the house with federal funds. That house will be occupied by a family that gives them hope of a brighter future. It certainly looks different at the corner of State Street this morning, and we're looking forward to building additional houses on either side of it as the effort continues to improve the quality of life in that neighborhood of the campground. Many of you may have heard about the recently announced information that came out of the facilities assessment report whereby we had an outside organization come in and look at all the city-owned facilities. What they determined was they gave us the number of buildings we own, which is like three hundred and sixty-seven billion, excuse me, three hundred and sixty-seven buildings. We have about three and a half million square feet of buildings, which is maybe good news. The bad news is, is that because proper maintenance has not been performed really probably over a series of time of decades, we're now looking at an eighty-three million dollar backlog that is required to make repairs to those facilities. We have first responders that are living in really deplorable conditions. We have community centers that have not had the maintenance that they've needed for a number of years. And so now that we have identified this problem and we've quantified where the problems are, then now we've got to find the money to fix them. And it's not any different than having identified the problem with broken infrastructure that was identified years ago, and we came up with a funding stream, and that's why in so many cases what you're seeing are repairs being done for the broken infrastructure. But we identified that as a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar unfunded liability at that time. So now when you look at the deferred maintenance, which is things that should be fixed today on our city-owned facilities, and you calculate what needs to be spent over the next ten years, you're looking at two-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollars of unfunded liabilities that we have, that we've got to determine where the money will come to make those necessary repairs. At the end of the day, we really want our citizens, no matter what city-owned facility they walk in, for it to have a freshness of Christmas, and it look like something that you'd be proud to have. That's not the situation, but it's not just the citizens, it's also our firehouses and other facilities, our public works facilities on Gale Street is in deplorable condition. So there's a lot of conversation that will take place in the coming months as we determine where does the money come to fix those facilities. On another note, completely different, Saturday was the first day or the opening day of Market in the Park, which is at Cathedral Square. This has been going on for a number of years, but it was actually the largest turnout that we've had since the beginning of Market in the Park. Now, we will continue doing that through July 29th, and that happens every Saturday morning at 7:30. So for those that'd like to get out and do shopping and get fresh vegetables and fruits and so forth, we encourage you to go to Market in the Park. Also, we'll have an afternoon market in the park going forward, and that's going to be located at Labretta Park on O'Shell Road, and it will begin May 31st and last until July 28th, and it's from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. So we encourage you to shop local and shop for freshness. So thank you, everybody, for being here today.
Councilmember Richardson, you have a presentation?
Yes. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We are blessed to have a very special guest today, an unusual guest. We have a child, four years old, by the name of Austin Piran, and his dad, Terrence, is with him today. And I'm going to read a proclamation in a moment to Austin. We discovered that Austin was moved by the plight of homeless people, and he set out to take part of his lunch money to feed the homeless. And he has fed the homeless in Mobile, Birmingham, Washington, DC, around the nation. He has been on these drives to feed the homeless, and he has been picked up by eight TV stations. He has been carried by MSNBC, and he is scheduled to go on a major network on the 14th. He's going to have to leave here this morning. His schedule is so busy that he, you'll notice he just got in here, because he had interviews, and he's going to have to leave immediately after this. I thought that to have a person of that caliber in our midst, that we ought to bring him down and declare today his day. And I intend to do just that. I got a call from Senator Jones' office in Washington, DC, and they asked me, "Have you met little Austin?" I have not met little Austin. They said, "Well, he is somebody you ought to meet." And they set out to tell me all what, so little Austin had done, so I got my secretary, "Find little Austin. Wherever he is, find him and get he and his father down here." So they are here with us today. And I'd like to remind all of us that it was the prophet Isaiah that said to us, "A child shall lead us." And I believe when you hear what Austin is doing, he is one of the people that was spoken of by the prophet Isaiah. The proclamation, give a glass. This is the proclamation. Can you all come up? Come on, Austin. Yay. All right. Mary, you, okay. My photographer here, too. Cut the light on, too. Okay. The proclamation says, "Whereas Master Austin Piran is being honored during the Mobile City Council meeting for feeding the homeless in Birmingham, Alabama, Mobile, Alabama, and Washington, DC. He is gaining national attention in the United States and Africa on Tuesday, May 1st, 2018. And whereas he was born on Christmas Eve, 2013, in Fort Worth, Texas, and is a member of the Third Baptist Missionary, Third Missionary Baptist Church in Pritchett, Alabama. Whereas Austin is interested in feeding the homeless began, his interest in feeding the homeless began after watching animal planet. After a mother panda bear left her cubs in the wild and learning from his father they will be homeless for a while, he discovered they are homeless people." That Austin launched his first show love project on February 26, 2018. Whereas Austin's goal is to launch a citywide block, blocks and socks drive to benefit one hundred people in need of basic hygiene necessities and comfortable socks. And whereas he has been recognized by Alabama Senator Doug Jones, NFL quarterback Jimmy Winston, news station WLATV, news station WLATV in Mobile, WVTM NBC 13 in Birmingham, WBRC Fox 6 in Huntsville, WJLA TV in Washington, DC, WILX in Lansing, Michigan, WCMH in Columbus, Ohio, WKTV in Utica, New York, and MSNBC nationwide. Has a great following on Facebook, was honorary pitcher at Birmingham Barron's baseball game on April 14, 2018, and will be an honorary pitcher, and I want you all to get this, will be an honorary pitcher at the Bay Bears baseball game on June 9, 2018.
All right.
And whereas on May 14, 2018, Austin will be featured on TLC's Groundbreaking Ministries, This Is Life Live, that highlights a person's story and family's about to experience life-changing memories as they unfold on live TV. Now, therefore, our favorite committee, senior council member, are this is going along with the mayor's members of the city council to hereby proclaim Tuesday, which is today, Austin Piran's day all over Mobile, and we extend to Austin our sincere congratulations and best wishes for many more years of good health and happiness. This is. So I brought a key to the city for Austin, and I just want Austin to know that this key will not open any other doors in the city, but it will unlock the hearts of all the two-hundred-thousand people that's living in City Mobile. You have the key to our heart today.
All right.
You all up at Birmingham, at the stadium up there, he said, "No." So I have your instructions. They're going to have a suite available for you and your family to come. I got all the instructions for you all to do. We want him to pitch, I'll pick the first ball at our baseball stadium. So I have all that information here for you. We just wish, this is the proclamation, and we just wish the best for Austin, just that, we just want you all to know that he has our best wishes, and I hope he keep on going. He gets the light. He's going to have to lead us. He is on the way. We are following Austin.
All right.
I gotta say, thanks for letting me do it. I know y'all busy. Appreciate you. Hold on, he hasn't got a message for us.
Don't forget to show love.
All right.
All right now.
That's right.
Very nice.
All right. Thank you very much.
Dr. Linda Carroll.
Thank you so much for letting me speak to you. I really just want to invite you to our fifth annual It Starts With Us Award Ceremony. It'll be this Thursday, May 3rd, at the historic Murphy High School Auditorium. Please come out and celebrate the citizens, our children, on this day. It starts at six o'clock. We look forward to having all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Adoption of the agenda? Salmo. Second.
Problem motion and second in a discussion. Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Send this down.
Appeals? We have a request for a waiver of the noise ordinance on Austin Drive on May 12 from 3:00 to 10:00 PM, and on Robin Hood Drive on May 25th and 28th from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Salmo.
Second.
Problem motion and second in a discussion?
Yes, sir. If you noted the first order of business on Austin Drive, just want to make that known.
Yes, sir. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to rezon property at 921 Dolphin Street and 926 Conti Street from R1 and V1 to LB2.
Is there anyone that would like to offer any commentary to this particular public hearing? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Today are the public hearings to fix costs for demolition of structures at the following locations. 308 Dunbar Street, 688 Whitney Street, 120 Michael Donald Avenue, 613 Crawford Lane, 7248th Street, 1205 Peabody Drive, 6901 Chapman Road, 511 Marine Street, 1011 Jesse Street, 1350B St. Stevens Road, 252 and 1/2 Cuba Street, 305 Clay Street, 310 Dunbar Street, 2907 Frederick Street, 1329 Congress Street, 416 Driver Street, and 410 Driver Street.
Is there anyone that would like to offer any commentary on any of the addresses just mentioned by our assistant city clerk in this public hearing? Yes, ma'am?
Representing.
If you could, come to the mic and give us your name and your address.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor, council. My name is Tilda Foster, and I'm at 12324 Rainell Avenue in Codyan, Alabama. I received a notification in regards to show up for this hearing this morning in relationship to 416 Driver Street. Unfortunately, there have been mishaps with this particular circumstance. I'm not really sure if the letter is defining that the cost for the demolition of the property because there was no prior notification in regards to it. I do have notification where there was the cleanup that was supposed to have been done in December. I received notification and cost for it in January 19th of this year, and several situations have occurred. One, the debris that was actually on the ground in front of Driver Street was not mine. It did not come out of that particular property. That property had been vacant and up for sale for two years, so there was nothing inside of the property. And it was the neighbors from the surrounding area that had placed those items in front of the house, and simply if the individual, that is, the person that goes out to find out and sends out these notifications, which I don't have her letter at hand, that she had simply stooped over and looked into the actual garbage bag that was there, it would relate to the Smith family that was down the street, Driver Street. So I guess with them taking an action to put debris in front of the house, some other neighbors, you know, decided to follow suit with that. So it's not always the individual or the owners that do this, and it's brought to our attention. We tried to get out. Unfortunately, during this period of time of October, to this period, to this day that I've got out of my sick bed, to come here to let you know that the follow-ups on different properties, me being an actual individual in the demolition area for the city of Mobile, that we do go out, bid these properties, and of course, it's quite contrary that I would have my property destroyed by the actual firm that I worked for because they were not aware. And if the research is not done behind these properties and the notifications are not done in proper time, then there is an issue involved. I'm all behind, you know, beautifying the neighborhood, but I can't beautify the neighborhood if the neighbors are in continuous destruction of my property. And when I say my property, I represent the estate of my father, Edwin Foster, and the notifications have not been received. There is no certified notification registered for this particular action to occur. So as I agree with what the city is probably going to do, and that is give it to organizations, charitable organizations, mind you, I'm not volunteering any property at this time. However, please make notification to the individuals. Make sure that that is a written signature that verifies that they are receipt of the documentation that you afforded, and ask, "Do you have an alternative for us to handle this property? If not, then we will proceed with the bylaws or whatever it is for the city of Mobile." But at this point, you've actually overstepped your own boundary because the property at 416 Driver Street was also sold to an individual in Dallas, Texas. That individual will return here and find out that there is no longer a structure on that property. Is it my fault? No. Was it sold as is? Yes. So we have quite a conundrum. And you say, "Shall I pay it back?" My clause said as is. However, when he bought it, there was a structure on it. It was not to me that I made demolition of it, nor had notification of it, nor the realtor, for that matter, that had the sole sign on the property. So before destruction, we have to research a little further, and I can pat myself on the back because before I let anybody go out in the company to do demolition, I researched and found out if there is any living survivor that could be notified, that if you want to take action on this property, you do it. I know the city probably doesn't have a research team like that. No, it's an obvious. Secondly, on the rotation of individuals going out, the inspectors, if we cut grass three weeks ago and we have rain, then you better believe that grass is going to be back there because God, he's not going to allow it to stop growing. So if you don't turn around and go back and check that property thereafter, then the point is it'll look just like it was before because you can't police the individuals that live around the property. So in reference to this, and if this is an amount that you're proposing to me to pay to the city of Mobile, then I have to object. I simply have to object to it, and we'll have further discussions on it because of the legality and notifications have not been met. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Richardson, the representative of this property wants to speak, and then after that, I'm going to ask Mr. Doffenbach to come and offer any succinct commentary he can offer relative to this property. Mr. Richardson?
Yes, I would just like to say that this property is in District 1, and the criteria for demolition a house is that it must be open to vagrants and the foundation undermined. And the notification is a person who is responsible for sending out notification is here, and we're not shorthanded with employees to do our research, and I suspect he is prepared to say that they did all they could do to notify the owner. Seems like the property had been sold, and when the property was sold, then the new owner had responsibility to make sure that that house was not open to vagrants, nor the foundation undermined, and if nobody corrected that, by law, the city was under orders to do something because if the city knew it was open and somebody got hurt in there, they could sue the city.
Good morning. David Dackenbaugh, Deputy Director, Municipal Enforcement. Just following up briefly with the 416 driver. This structure was demolished, and what we're here for is the fixing of the cost for those hard costs associated with the demolition. The City of Mobile does have a policy. We follow state law and city ordinance on notification procedures. And just briefly to go over those procedures, the City of Mobile Municipal Enforcement, we engage with a title search, a title report of every owner that is recorded in, as a public recording of who has ownership, but also ownership interest in the property. So if there's a mortgage or a recorded lien, we send notice to everybody on the title report. We also put a notice in the public press register. We post the property, but in addition, we file a list pendants with probate court, and that's important because that list pendants notifies any potential buyer of the property that the city of Mobile has pending investigations with code violations of the property. We also go back and post the property at the public hearing where the council declared this a public nuisance. We post those properties at every stage. So there are notification procedures that have occurred with this procedure.
Any questions for Mr. Doffenbach?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have all the certified documentation that has been mailed out to the head of? I don't have, I apologize. I'm sorry, I don't have her file here, but I would be happy to discuss. We can sit down, review the file, and go over who we sent notices to when they were sent because, again, this is the hearing for the cost, fixing cost.
If you could connect with Mr. Doffenbach, he should be able, hopefully, to provide you with the information that you requested. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Conclude the hearings?
That concludes the public hearing. Anyone else that would like to speak to any of the addresses called by our assistant city clerk? And if not, that concludes all of those public hearings.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. William Casey.
My name is William Casey, and I'm a local attorney here in Mobile.
My name is William Casey and I'm a local attorney here in Mobile. And I'm here today with my friend and neighbor, Brandon Martier and his family. They're here today because they have a food truck. And recently, they have ran into some issues at Sage Park. Earlier in this meeting, I heard the mayor speaking of, and I don't miss to mischaracterize it, but a fresh market where we're going to have a park environment where people can come twice, I think twice a month or twice, two times, and sell different products at the park. We were under the impression that we had something very similar at Sage Park. Up until recently, there have been no regulations being enforced at Sage Park for the vending of different foods, beverages, what have you. My client checked out, or probably checked in with the authorities that he thought were proper, and he got permission to go up to Sage Park and sell food. There's been some issues there. For lack of a better term, other vendors have came and demanded that he leave, saying that they own the park and it belongs to them. Well, I certainly think that everybody, you know, likes to think that they have certain privileges or rights to certain items. But the truth is, the park belongs to all of us. Certain people may go there regularly and may feel that they are entitled to certain privileges or that it's their park. And I think to a certain extent, that's a good feeling to have. But everyone has equal rights to the park. My clients have done everything by the book. They have gotten the proper licenses with the city. They have checked with the health inspectors. They have followed all the guidelines they were requested to do. Once they went out there, they were accosted by a woman who had been selling the products there at the park before they'd gotten there, saying, this is our park, you need to leave, what are you doing here? Go somewhere else. Obviously, that's inappropriate. When they got me involved, we came to find out the person who had been doing this isn't even licensed by the city of Mobile. They had been doing it, for lack of a better term, freelancing. Or I wouldn't even say freelancing. I would just say, you know, basically without any, doing the foul, the necessary, for lack of a better term, requirements that the city has for a reason. It's one thing if a child has a lemonade stand in the neighborhood. It's another thing if a adult is running a business, not paying taxes, not following regulations, and doing what they want, when they want, and how they want. After they were accosted by this woman, a man who identified himself, and I'd rather not say who he was today, just had respect for the council and the rules, but I will identify him as a coach on one of the teams came, and then he accosted my client, saying that he didn't have a right to be there, that he ran this park, and that he said who came here and who got to sell and who didn't get to sell, and that he was going to do it his way. At that point, they called the proper authorities, who was a representative of the park, and he said, look, we're just going to shut this down so we can get some order here, which probably was the safest thing to do. My clients want to do things by the book. They want to follow the regulations. And they want to make the city proud to have them out there. And they are trying. That means they have one minute?
Yes, sir.
If you could, if it would be possible, if I could have one extra minute to let Mr. Martier address them, I'd certainly appreciate it. We're asking the city to step in, take a look at what's going on at Sage Park. I think that the idea that the city has about having an open market is great. There are some days you may feel like eating tacos or Mexican food. Some days you may want Chinese, some days you may want Ethiopian. And one thing that is great about this is it gives everybody the opportunity to have what they want, when they want. And it makes our city a much richer environment and more diverse, and to be honest with you, stronger. If the city would, would y'all please allow Mr. Martier one minute? If he could do that?
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Like you were saying, the thing was the issue, I liked to go by the rule books. I did everything I could, you know, I have my licenses, the health department, everything. It was on a Saturday, March 31st. I was getting ready commissary early in the morning so I can go out in the afternoon, you know, to sell food at Sage Park. So I was getting there, I was setting up everything. And the Mr. Rick, Brick is the owner of Las Catras. That's like a region of Honduras. That's another food truck competitor. So he comes up to me, actually attacking me, saying, why are you here? This is our park, I run this park. And to me, the park is public. And he was like, you need to get out of here. Do you know who I am? I was like, no, sir. Then after that, he called Coach Z, that's the director, not the director, but the runs the fields there. So he later on showed up, five minutes after that. And he confronted me saying, do you know who I am? You know, I run this, this and that. So then after that, I was like, I need somebody else, you know? And then they called Mr. Collins. Mr. Collins, I think the director of the park, and he's the one that said, you know what, let's make it fair for everybody, let's no longer sell here. But, you know, and they came up with that issue.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Collins, did you?
Yes, sir.
Come on down.
All right, Shadrack Collins Jr., Superintendent of Recreation. On this day that they speaking about, it was a Saturday, I guess, March 31st. Actually, I was out doing public, doing a personal business. I got a phone call from Coach Z, who's one of our sports coordinators, saying we had an issue at the park. So I told him I was in the vicinity, so I would come over. And at that point, so I wasn't privy to what went on before I got there. But when I arrived, it was this young man and another, one of the other guys, you could tell they were having a heated debate. So at that moment, I let them know at that point, that we don't, we didn't allow food trucks, we didn't allow food trucks, ice cream trucks, or any other, we don't allow any selling out of any vehicles, except if you get a clearance from our department for special events. And then that's when I let him know, at that point, Sage Park was actually being opened up for a public bid because we had had concessions out to Sage Park in years. And we had just opened up, we was about to open it up for public bid, and I made him aware that he was able to apply for that bid. And then once that person, once that bid was awarded, we wouldn't allow food trucks out there at all because once somebody was selling concessions, we couldn't allow somebody to come out there and sell on top of them because they would be, they would, you know, they would have to pay the city to be out there. So they want to be fair if we awarded somebody concessions at that park and then allowed food trucks to sell over the top of them. So he said he was aware. So I think a week later, he came into our office, and he received emails from Mr. Dunn. I can't call his last name, but worked in the department that handles the bid because I wasn't privy to.
Dunn Rose.
Dunn Rose. And he received, and then he said he didn't receive it. So Mr. Kessler actually went to his office and ran him off a paper copy. They had the meetings, the bids were put in. I think two people applied for the bids, and then we had a pre-bid conference. And only one of the people who bid, he showed up to the conference. And that was the last thing I heard of. But just for, just for, just for your information regarding operating procedures in parks and rest, we do not allow food trucks, ice cream truck, personal to come out and sell at the parks. Now, we have in the past for special events, like the Mary's Cup, we had tournaments where you can get permission. And he actually was one of the participants that we allowed to sell at the Mary's Cup. But that was a special event. But just on a regular day-to-day basis, we do not allow, we do not allow food trucks or ice cream trucks or anything to sell off the property. And that's just the policy as it is right now.
Yes, sir. We had a very robust discussion about your particular situation and the food truck structure in the city of Mobile as a whole. Ms. Flo Kessler was an integral part of that discussion. Did you want to comment add any perspective, Ms. Kessler? Yeah, you all can be seated and Mr. Kessler is going to come now. Thank you for coming down.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, ma'am.
While Ms. Kessler is coming up, I have a question that maybe she can help answer as well because I heard Mr. Collins say that ice cream trucks and that sort of thing are not allowed at city parks. Ice cream trucks are at Langen Park almost every day, all day long. So I think we need to get some clarification on what's allowed, what's not allowed, what's by permit, what's not by permit, because it seems a little confusing.
They're at Medal of Honor all the time, too.
Yes, sir.
Well, that's a right statement.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to object.
Well, Mr.
Call Ms. Kessler to the stand?
Yes, sir.
Let's continue with the, Mr. Collins.
And I think Ms. Kessler can help clear up a lot of the confusion.
Ms. Kessler, if you could, come on and answer that question. And as I was saying earlier, we had a robust discussion relative to food trucks, the policies. It may be something we need to set a specific meeting for so that we can get a greater understanding. It's not only impacting Langen Park, Medal of Honor, but I have food trucks pretty much on all of the downtown area that park right in front of established brick and mortar restaurants. There's some, if we're going to talk about unfairness, there's a level of unfairness in that practice. So it may be that we need to have a discussion about this practice in general. But if you could, anything you'd like to offer relative to this would be helpful.
I think you're right. I think that's a good idea to have a discussion and develop a policy to address food trucks, both in the park and on the streets in the business district. I think there is confusion. I have also seen ice cream trucks at Langen Park very frequently. And I think there's confusion because at one time, the Parks Director did have a verbal policy of prohibiting all food trucks, including ice cream trucks. But I do not think that that policy was actually enforced. So we do have a bit of a state of confusion. I think everything Mr. Collins said sounds completely correct to me, except that on the books, there is a policy to allow food trucks in parks. There's an actual permit for concessions in food truck that can be issued by the Parks Department, but it's my understanding from the people who work there that that's never been used. So I think that's the source of the confusion. We're just, you know, kind of approaching it from different directions. So I think the best solution is to just sit down and work out according to the policy as you've suggested.
Pardon me? Mrs. Gregory?
No, no. The question was, what does the gentleman do in the meantime while we figure this out?
I would like to speak with the directors of the Parks and Recreation Department and see if there's interest in possibly implementing the permit processes on the books that hasn't been used in the interim. Of course, that will only address food trucks in parks that won't talk about food trucks on, in the business district.
Any further comments or questions for Ms. Kessler?
No, I'm concerned about these, what seem to be bullies, outlaws up there telling one food truck supplier what he can and cannot do. I think that is completely, I think the Parks Department would have to decide what is to be done at the park, not all these other people who coming out there saying, do you know who I am? And really, nobody knew who he was. He shouldn't have been up there.
I don't know of any city policy that would give another vent, one vendor, the authorities would regulate another vendor. No, absolutely not.
But if all of that had not happened, we wouldn't be getting to the bottom of this. I think Prazada is right, we need to set a policy not for Sage Park, but for all parks. Because ice cream trucks, they are entrusting tenure park every day. So you can't tell one park, we shouldn't be telling one park what you can't do. And we're doing that at other parks. And we need to post the rules. Put the, post the rules at the park so they'll know. Wouldn't be no doubt. No food trucks allowed except for special events. Put the sign up. So when someone drive up and someone come out there with some of their food, just point to the sign. So you got the, Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir. And I think the main reason why we didn't allow like, like ice cream trucks and food trucks because a lot of the parks, you know, concessions is the way they generate revenue for their teams in order to fund their programs. And so, you know, that kind of worked against them if you allow a food truck or ice cream truck to come into your park and sell. So that's why that rule was put in place where you wouldn't allow somebody to come. Because right now, Mr. Gregory is kind of privy to some, a situation where, because we had to move the parks, some of the parks have issues because they can't sell concessions. But due to CIP, we had to move the parks to Sage in order for them to play because the fields are being refurbished. So that's why that rule was in place, why they wouldn't allow a truck to come into and sell. Because none of the parks have the, have the, you know, the preference to sell. You don't want an ice cream truck because then that take away from sales. You know, so that's why that was.
But in parks like Tristan Towne?
Yeah, they're kind of different, different parks to set up. But yeah, it's a difference. So we need to clarify that.
Yeah, it's no competition.
Right.
There. So, and we, in the past, we didn't have competition at Sage. I didn't know, I don't know of no active organized group that is settling anything at Sage.
No, like I say, and again, it's kind of hard to police that because you don't have somebody there 24/7. So if somebody pull up, but the rule is, they shouldn't be there. You know, I let him know that. I said, if somebody pull up and I'm not here, there's no way I could police that. We don't have park rangers or park police that's saying to enforce that. But, you know, but that is the rule that right now that's on paper that you can't, unless you have special permission for a special event.
Would it be difficult to post the rules?
No, it always helps. That's what we trying to do in the community centers. When you get, it's always good, whether it's in black and white, that you get to point.
No doubt about it. I think all of these parks, if we don't want people settling in, we ought to have a sign saying that they can't, they can't sell. You would create a no doubt moment.
Yes, sir.
The other thing, if I could comment, is
Ms. Rich?
When the city is dealing with either a special events license or if we write a policy, I don't think that people realize if they're buying ice cream that the person might not have a health department or a city business license. And that's a real concern. So we got to get our hands around that. I don't think parents would appreciate, you know, not, they kind of assume that all that's in place.
And one of the choke points where you have notice that there is going to be this kind of activity is, and I understand the confusion because a person who owns a food truck comes to the city's business licensing department and gets a business license, and they don't understand that a business license is not authority to use public property to conduct your business. And so an ordinance ideally would also have, you know, some notification, you know, you've got to have a separate permit. One thing that was mentioned this morning is some food trucks have relationships on private property, you know, which is fine. That's not a public property. But for public property, just having a business license isn't enough. For example, the ice cream stores, you know, Old Dutch, they have an ice cream store, brick and mortar. That does not give them authority to have a pushcart to go up and down Old Shell Road. That requires separate authorization. So there's a, there's a lot of things.
Well, I think all of this makes this prime for a committee assignment, and we'll work to get that assigned and hopefully get all of the pertinent players at one table and come up with an ordinance that addresses as much of this as possible.
Yeah, just one more comment, Mr. Vice President.
Yes, ma'am.
I saw that Mr. Collins left. He mentioned something with my parks because I had brought up Langen Park. In Langen Park proper, there is no concession at all. So that's where the ice cream truck is coming and where, you know, other food trucks could certainly pull up and operate. If you do have a concession stand there that the city has entered into an RFP and selected a proposal and set somebody up in business, that's a different story. That's what we were talking about with Sage Park today, that if someone comes in and operates at Sage Park with the authority of the city, then no, we don't want food trucks setting up and then competing with this vendor. So in Langen Park, we have no concession. That's why the ice cream truck is there and anybody else is welcome to come. Across the street at municipal baseball, that's a different story. We have concessions. We have concessions at Hillsdale Park, however. Hillsdale, as he mentioned, unfortunately, has been moved to Sage Park for the duration because the field is being worked on. So just a little bit of a different story here, which is another reason why we need to get this stuff straight so that we know exactly what the rules are, how we're operating. And so the gentleman, like this man who has come to visit with us today, will know exactly what he can and cannot do and what to expect. And we appreciate you coming.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I would like to at least recommend to the, our request of the administration that as we approach this policy, that the mayor that as we approach this policy, that the mayor issue a policy to the administration and to the entire staff that says, "We don't establish policy unless it's then signed off by the mayor," and then that can get the appropriate attention of the entire public. So this guy may not have bought a truck. He may have bought all these supplies if he knew at any time that there was some internal policy. And this is about just being completely honest with the people that are trying to invest in our city. And so I appreciate what you're trying to do. I'm more on the side that we shouldn't have city-issued or managed, whatever we want to call it, facilities, when we have gentlemen and ladies that are running these trucks. And it's becoming a very popular thing. We've used it in the city. So I'm just asking that when we do have this committee meeting, that we invite all the licensed truck owners, even the ones that are just licensed and maybe not even have a truck, but it just, you understand, when they have a business license. And we also invite the public, Department of Public Health, because they're a major factor in this whole situation, and let's just get to the bottom of it. But in the meantime, I would like to see the administration issue some, something straight from the 10th floor that says how we're going to handle this in the meantime. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Vice President?
Mr. West?
I think that is the intent. I've spoken with Ms. Kessler, and I think what we're going to do is come up with an interim plan that makes sense and is well-publicized and respects the differences in the parks that have active concession areas and those that don't, pending any change in ordinance.
Mr. Casey, your time has expired. Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Wesley Young?
I'd like to say good morning to each and every one of you all.
Good morning.
Vice President, Manager, Members of the City Council, Mayor and Staff. I reside at 3058 James Street, Mobile, Alabama, District 5. I am a citizen of Mobile. I am a retired employee of 27 years in Mobile. I am president of the Mobile Public Service Workers. I am here today to address some issues and concerns of those workers, and a lot of those workers are here now. One of the issues that we are concerned about is that, as last year, you know, I addressed this council when it came down to raises, when you all gave the police and firemen the $5,000 bonus and 2.5% raise for each five years that they were employed in the city, and you sent these employees $249 when they cut that check, they may have $170. So if you just divide that up by 12 months, they didn't receive anything but a pacifier. They can't live with a pacifier, they have to have milk. And so we are concerned about that. We're also concerned about some of the issues that's taking place in that Public Works Department. In the year 2016, under my directive through our attorney, we requested for the city of Mobile to sit down with us, city representative, let us discuss some of the issues and concerns that we had. We had 13 employees, and that concern went from sexual harassment to harassment and everything in between. The city was represented by Mr. Ashland Hill, your attorney for City of Mobile. At the end of that discussion, he told us these words, "I believe everything that you employees are saying." We requested him to go back to the mayor and request a meeting with the mayor in 2016. Two weeks after that, outside this building, I saw Mr. Hill. He asked me, "Have we have heard anything from the mayor about a meeting?" We haven't heard anything from 2016, and here we are in 2018. It seems like these employees don't have any value, but I'm standing here to let you know today, they have value, and they're going to continue to have value. Now, let's try to illustrate to you at some of the problems in each of these departments. In the sanitation department, they have lost 13 drivers in the last four years. They're working $12 or $14 a day sometime now on Saturdays, creates overtime. They had eight trucks purchased, but they had 12 trucks taken away from that department. Trash department is short of two crews each and every single day. They are short of 13 employees because of retirement. A lot of employees are retired because they are afraid to be in the city because of the way they are being treated. They are working out of fear. We in 2018, that shouldn't be happening in no city in America. There are also employees who are retired because they are at a point where they cannot continue to take the way they are being treated like in meetings, as with fantasy. They are being threatened. This is being hidden, but now the cat is out the bag. There are also, for the first time in the history of this city, the trash department working 14, 15, 16 hours a day. They are using crew chiefs, supervisors, even working on Sundays, never heard of that before, and I've been in 1977. Now, beginning of the meeting today, I heard the mayor address about the infrastructure, how much money it would take to do the infrastructure, and he told, he read about everything, about the land and the buildings, but what he failed to do is tell you these words. He also said, "We could be involved in the effort to shift non-essential city personal services to the private sector." Well, privatization is already beginning. If you have employees and you have departments where you're not providing the proper equipment and the proper employees, that's cutting in departments. This is nonsense. We are not going to stand by and watch these people go down because of some politics. Now, you have to understand, 95% of these people that's in public service live in the city of Mobile. When they receive that check, they spend that money in Mobile. That money goes back into their economy where we can create sale tax, not like those on the 10th floor from Baldwin County. When they get their checks, they take their checks in Baldwin County, and they spend their money in Baldwin County, and then at the end of the year, you come back in and say, "Well, you know, the sale tax is dwindling." What do you expect? It has to dwindle. Money is going outside the city that shouldn't be coming into the city. Now, we passed a one cent sale tax to eliminate these problems. The mayor said he had wanted, "You all decided that you all was going to take the sale tax and spend $3 million in each district every year to make your infrastructure better." Well, if you don't need the sale tax, why you not paying the employees? Why they can't receive a raise? We respectfully request that this year's budget, as U.S. council members, look into the budget and find money to do the same thing for these public service employees that you've done for the police departments. They are the same employee, they're just different jobs, that's all. The police is filed out protectors, public service, they are collectors, they are cleaners, they are repairs, and they are builders. They're just as important as any other employees in this city, and we want to make sure that they are treated that way. Now, Mr. President, I thank you all for giving me an opportunity to speak here today, and I want to submit to you today, the words that I've spoken here today, they are the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God. Amen.
Is there anyone from the administration that would like to have any comments? Well, look, now, we asked earlier that we not have any public outcry. We're trying to have a fair and balanced meeting, and we've heard the statements from Mr. Young, they don't fall on deaf ears. Let me just speak for me in saying that if the raises and incentives implemented for police and fire, recommended by the administration and wholeheartedly supported by this council, if a similar action is brought forward to treat our public service workers in the same manner with the same respect and the resources of their, I don't believe anybody up here would be against it. I don't believe one person would be against that action if it's brought before this council, if it's a part of the budget that we receive later in the summertime. Any other comments from members of the council?
I would just, yes, I would just like to say, I think you already made it known that council members can't sponsor revenue items if it has to do with the budget. We can't sponsor, we can only support. I stand ready, willing, and able to support it if it comes on, if it comes on this agenda, I'm supporting it. I am concerned about the comment, because Mr. Young told us in closing, that every word he said was true. Mr. Young talked about employees being harassed and threatened. I am concerned about that, and I certainly would like for the administration to at least investigate that. You know, they have made this allegation, and even if it's not true, we need to know. No employee should have to go to work feeling like they are threatened. And he also said that there are those who left because they had gotten tired of working under those type situations. I don't think we ought to have one employee working under those type conditions, and I thank the administration, I'm asking the administration to please investigate that and let this council know whether or not that allegation is founded or unfounded. We want to know.
Any other comments from the members of the council? I want to briefly address the statement relative to the bonus. In last year's budget, Councilman Williams fought vigorously to make certain that our retirees received some measure of extra compensation, and I led an effort along with Councilman Richardson to make certain that those who are not in police and fire got some level of a Christmas bonus during the Christmas time. Now, I know taxes and all of that had to be subtracted out of it, but the very true reality is, absent us moving forward with that effort, you would not have received anything. And so, I just want us to look at that in a clear perspective. I'm in support of if the administration, again, brings forward an item that does what you all are asking be done, I'll be the very first one to support it. I'll co-sponsor it. If it's comfortable for us, I'm going to fight for it. But I also want to just make known that it took some effort to get what the employees received that made the $45,000 or less, and we did that realizing that other departments had received bonuses, not necessarily bonuses, but raises and other compensation in a measure to try to be as fair as possible within that budget cycle. And so that isn't us saying that you don't have measure, that you don't have worth, that we don't value what you do, because probably outside of police and fire, I'm in contact with this department day to day with issues in my district. So I appreciate everything that everyone in each of these departments do, but we do have financial constraints, and we were working to try to do something as opposed to nothing during that Christmas season. Again, any further comments?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Richardson?
Mr. Vice President, recently, very recently, I've had some employees from Public Works that come to me to say that there are members of the administration over there that is treating them like little children, that they send them to timeout, you know, like a teacher tell a student, "You're in timeout, you go and face the wall." That the person in administration tell these grown workers, "Go to timeout and stay in timeout until I get you out of timeout." I don't know whether this is happening or not, but it should be investigated. It should not be going on. That has come to me. And Mr. Young?
Yes, sir.
As you get these complaints, you got to be the voice crying in the wilderness, brother. You can't let this happen to them and not say something. I'm saying, we don't care if you come every week, don't you let this keep on happening to these workers? You come down here and tell us something, and something will be done. I am hurt over what I have heard that is happening to workers in that department. So keep us apprised of, in all these infractions, keep us apprised.
The box is rigged. The box is rigged.
The what? Thank you, Mr. Young, Mr. West. I think all of us are concerned and genuinely interested in hearing any feedback you might be able to provide us relative to some of the serious allegations made here today. We realize that we have no direct control over employees, we understand that, but we'd ask that to the extent that is possible, those matters be investigated and that we be made apprised of any findings or any modifications that might need to be made. Mr. Woods?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll tell you, we consistently have active investigations, and we make sure we investigate any and all such allegations, whether they're public or private. To the extent their personnel matters, the administration handles those, but we'd be more than glad to communicate to you what we find and don't find in a general level without violating anybody's personnel rights or without going stinkily by name at the personnel issues.
Yes, sir.
I have a question that's directed to the administration. It was important to my office last year with longevity pay, knowing that it had gone to the police and not to the fire rescue department, and lobbied real hard to make that a reality. Started half year. Is there a way for the council to get an understanding on what longevity pay, based on the same exact scale, would be required for Public Works Department? The, you know, number of employees and looking at their amount of years and how it would, you know, factor out?
Yes, certainly, we can do that, be happy to do that during the budget process, which is almost upon us. If you recall, last year, the council did ask the administration to examine the departments other than police and fire to determine a comparability with our peer cities in the state, and that was accomplished when those numbers were provided to the council. We'd be happy to do that again.
And for a number of employees, if you're comparing cities, also number of employees that sit in Public Works. I know that in the past, I thought we had an in-house department to do smaller cement projects. You and I met to talk about that, and I understand there's no one in-house anymore doing those kind of works, where we're able to, can only let go big contracts and not have in-house talent to do it?
I think there is, there are limited personnel in Public Works who do that, certainly not sufficient for what we need as a city. One of the issues with the term "public works" is it embraces different classes of employees in different cities. Some cities perform services that we don't, we perform some services that other cities don't, but we do have those numbers.
Okay, but if we could then get apples to apples, if possible, on that comparison, because I think it gave us the comfort level that their salaries were in keeping, if not better than some of our peer cities.
Yes, ma'am, you remember correctly.
Right, I do recall that, but I'm wondering now whether our numbers are working either against us or against them, as far as, you know, how many hours and listening to the number of hours that they're spending. So I would just be curious to know that, too.
Well, I think you're right, we need to deal with facts and not assertions or lore.
Appreciate it, thank you so much.
Mr. Vice President?
Mrs. Gregory?
While we're talking about this, and I know we will start dealing with the budget very soon, but in the meantime, the way that police and fire, one of the ways that police and fire were able to get their raises and the longevity pay was working within the department to find those savings. So it's May, so if it's possible now for the administration to work with the staff, the administration within Public Works, to see what you all can find in the way of savings, budget efficiencies, that sort of thing, so that that will help initiate a raise for all of your employees, and you all are the ones to do it, because you know what works, what doesn't work, what's a waste of time, what you can do better. So if you all could work together with them, I think that would certainly make it easier for the mayor come budget time for us to have that raise that you want or a bonus, longevity pay. pay, and that sort of thing. And like Mr. Manzi said, everybody on this council, we're ready. You know, we're with you, and we want to make that happen for you. And I think that would be a great thing for you all to, you know, to get together with Mr. West and his department to begin looking at.
I'm with the president.
Thank you. Soon as possible.
Any further comments? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Young. Yes, ma'am.
Reverend Allgood, Tony Allgood.
Mr. Chairman, before I start, may I ask to be able to share my time with Pastor Marvin Lou, who is the Chair of Faith in Action Alabama?
Yes, sir. As long as it's within the five minutes. Yes, sir. And if you could give us your name and address, please.
Reverend Tony Allgood. I reside 1557 Hillendale Drive, Mobile, Alabama, 36693.
Yes, sir.
I am one of the tri-chairs in Alabama for the Poor People's Campaign, a national call for moral revival. What I say today is said out of love. Love for justice and love for our neighbors as we love ourselves. Fifty years ago, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said that it was time to move from civil rights to human rights. And it was this call that brought him to Memphis, Tennessee in April 1968. He came to support the sanitation workers for decent working conditions and better wages. It was also there that he lost his life to an assassin's bullet. Fifty years later, we stand before you, our elected public servants, and call on you to ensure decent wages and working conditions for the public service workers who perform work that is critical to ensuring the health and safety of our citizens by removing the trash and garbage from our communities. But at this time, it appears that the city has set the Public Works Department up to fail. And we believe that this has been done deliberately so that the work that they do can be privatized. If it's privatized, then many of these workers and their families may end up homeless. Many could face falling into poverty. The city does not operate to make a profit. It operates to provide a service to the citizens. There is no way that in the long run, a private company can operate cheaper than the city. This is not a Democrat or Republican issue. It's not a conservative or liberal issue. It's a human rights issue, and it's a moral issue. Some of you may have spoken of your faith when you campaigned for office. And I've heard a candidate say that he ran for the office because the Lord called him to run. We all would do well to remember how the Lord said we should take care of the poor and the oppressed. And I believe we all can agree that the Public Works employees being oppressed. How can we be one Mobile when we allow these workers, our neighbors, and our fellow citizens to be treated this way? Please don't take what I say as a position of weakness. It's not weak to love your neighbor as you love yourself, and it's not weakness to strive for justice. Now, I represent just one organization out of many that would be coming before you in the future. You know, in the end, we will not be judged on how well we treat the rich and the powerful but how we treat the least of these. Thank you.
Reverend Lou, you have about a minute at this point.
That's good close time. That's good close time, Reverend Manzi. Marvin Lou, Storm Memorial Sealing Church, 1266 Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue, 36603. For me and those concerned in my community, it's an optics issue. It just looks bad. When we are doing our best to bring in industry, to bring in tourism, to bring in revenue, to make our city one of the desired destinations, not only on the Gulf Coast but in the United States of America, but the people who help keep our city functioning, who help keep our city beautiful, who help keep our city clean are being treated as the least of these, it's an optics issue that will make us look bad in the long run. I need you all to please keep your word. Keep your word to support these individuals as they simply want to be able to better provide for their families. Keep your word to keep the pressure on the administration to find ways, to find the funding in order for these individuals to stay on their job. Keep your word, because in the long run, your word is the only thing that counts. Because as my grandfather said, "My word is my bond."
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, again, and then we'll move on. I think you've heard from multiple members of this council today that if that's presented to this council, we will move expeditiously to address it. You know, the challenge has been issued to Mr. Young to continue to be a vocal advocate for our public service workers. We've asked that those allegations that have been made be properly addressed and investigated, and those findings, to the degree permissible, be brought back to this council. And I just want to remind, in every other instance where this council has given our word, we've come through in every other instance. And so if it's a possibility, and if it's brought before us through the budget process by the administration, I think you will find that we will keep our word, because in every other instance, that's exactly what the seven of us have done over the last five years. So I appreciate the time that you all have taken to come and apprise us of the various situations in your department. I appreciate what you do, because I'm in contact all the time with the leadership of your department, because probably more so than any other district, the workers are in District Two with Mardi Gras and everything else, bringing the city back in a very efficient way and a very proper way. And so again, if it's brought before us, we will address it. Thank you all for bringing what you have brought to us today relative to these allegations. It's in the administration's hand. We'll wait to hear back from them. In the meantime, as Councilman Richardson said, if it requires weekly attendance to keep us on the forefront of what's going on, please do so. Thank you. Ms. Assistant City Clerk?
Reggie Hill.
Excuse me for taking a little while to get down here today. Our public workers are beeping to my seat. But Mr. Chairman, members of the council, in the absence of our mayor, and to the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, good morning. My name is Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street. Before I begin my remarks today, continuing the conversation about the nonprofit empowerment commission, I would like to make a brief announcement and accordingly invite each of you and leaders of the city, the citizens of the city that are here with us, to the youth empowerment rally dripping in success, which will be taking place Saturday, May the 12th, at the Seals Recreation Center from 12:00 to 1:30 PM. We have representation from Senator Doug Jones' office that will be here, as well as Secretary of State John Merrill. They will be here registering people to vote and getting photo IDs. And we have various leaders within the community on the youth perspective that are going to be sharing their stories as how they understand the city and life as young people. A couple of weeks ago, I had an opportunity to share with you an idea and concept that I believe would be extremely beneficial for the city of Mobile. I want to commend all nonprofit organizations that are in the city working hard to improve the quality of life. There are a vast variety of those type groups here, and they're doing diligent work that is helping to better our city. But I believe that we could perform at a better rate if there was a cohesive collection of these organizations working together. I believe that if there was one body, a specific commission that was put in place by resolution from the city council, that we can actually see representation from each district, and which we can also have representation from the administration, and we can collectively put these ideas together. The purpose of this commission would be to foster a culture of service in Mobile, Alabama, that uses cohesive collaboration and culture to cultivate a practice of progress, development, sustainability, and work for opportunities through the nonprofit sector for all communities, especially those most underserved, through creation, collection, distribution, and acceptance of varying resources. We would then be able to see where one group of the city may have something that can be offered to another area, but oftentimes, we just don't know what's going on. A lot of times, there are services that are available. There are resources that are in place, but too many people aren't having the conversation to bring them to the table. And so I believe that this is something that we should definitely be considering. One of the students, and before I make this statement, we've heard today a lot about the positions of so many people within the city. And so there's a diligent work that's already before you, other than having to worry about some of the things that I believe citizens could take responsibility for. So we have to be willing to share this burden with you all if we expect to see changes within the city. One of the program participants in Success for the Future gave me a survey that was issued into the school system about a week or so ago, and that was worthy, this was from the city. It's a collaboration with the system. It's a group evidence to success, and it's targeting specific areas. And it's asking them questions about marijuana usage, or if you're going to, if you skip school, your parents know, things of this instance. And these young people feel that there is a stereotype on their area because there's only specific parts of the city that are being questioned with this. Whereas with Success for the Future, last year, we did a survey with over 100 kids from all over the county in which they created the questions. They designed what it was. So we have to be looking into, if we're going to resource something that is going to be beneficial for them, are we actually considering their ideas? Are we looking at something from behind the boardroom perspective? If we have people in position to articulate what's happening within our communities, that makes the job a lot easier for the people that are representing us. If you're aware of the things that are happening, we then can put something in place that is actually going to be diligent and handle the situation. And I'll give you an example of some of the questions that were asked. A hundred of these kids, they came up with this. And we have 100 kids who took this all over the county, and I'd be glad to provide the information for you as well. I'll try and run through these very briefly. Do you think that people today are more concerned with being accepted by others and that they lack the ability to make their own decisions? Why or why not? If you could run for a position in government, which would you run for and why? Is violence a problem in society today, or is it something exaggerated by the news and media? Why or why not? What about yourself would you change if you could? What should be done to make Mobile a better place? And one that really stuck out to me, I'm going to speed through this. What should we do better to prepare for a natural storm or extreme flooding? Do you want to move to another city when you grow up? Why or why not? That question, number nine. Do you want to move to another city? Of the 100 participants, more than 90% were saying yes, they did, simply because the services weren't in place to what they want. Not the idea that people weren't putting things in place to try and help them, but it wasn't catering to their specific needs. So I ask that you would look at the materials that I'm going to provide for you this week, which will continue that purpose and give you the actual resolution of what we could do. And I hope that you would bring that up to vote and that we can move forward, and I'd love to assist you with that. Thank you for the time.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Irene Anton.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First thing, I would like to thank you all for the card you sent to me with all of the signatures and all.
Ms. Anton, can you give us your address, please?
Oh, I thought you did. Irene Anton, 2202 Clinton Street, Mobile, Alabama. Your good Shepherd's report. I'm talking about litter, just like everybody else have been talking about, and setting up tin traps, litter traps, in the water of Pritch Creek, and have kayaks in Dog River and all of that. The people need money here because it's a great amount of money you got to have for those things. I guess you have a picture of that where somebody was on a canoe in that area, and you have pictures of it that I put down there. So I would like to know how many of you know where Pritch Creek is? Do you go fishing?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So that's one person. I don't even know where it is. And then, well, we know where Dog River is. And do you know where Mack Nolly Park is, a boat launch? How many of you down there have boats? Okay. Well, see, these are some things that we in the city need to know. We have a young man on the aisle street, you know, and his name is Little James. That's what we call him, but he's a grown man. He pick up trash, a block or two, all the way around, litter, where people are throwing it out of the cars. We had Keep Mobile Beautiful. They closed that, but when you call, they'll tell you who to talk to and whatever. And then we have the thing out by the police department, if you can get it over there, the litter. But just like everybody's saying, those people are working. I know a lady who have retired and was harassed at one of the houses when she went to take care of something. But a whole lot of stuff is going on right now. I got some extra help of carrying me around, but I'm still getting around and watching things. And we do have litter patrol cars that go through different cities, I mean, different communities, and it's mostly in our communities. But I have followed them other places, and other places they don't seem to be going. We have the big trucks where we have a sign that says, "Don't go down that street." Those big trucks go down that street. And you know the trucks that you have where you pull the trash, pull it over when it's full of trash? Sometimes they don't pull it over in that area. And I'm not telling you something I heard. You know I saw it. And I have talked to the people on the trash trucks and things. I talked to them, too. Everything they said was true. All right. I'm through. Have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Ms. Anton. Yes, ma'am.
CIP resolutions held over. 21285, authorized contract with Infrastructure Management Services for 2018 CIP, citywide pavement inspection and evaluation of all roadways.
Lower to May, motion to lower until May.
May 22nd?
May 22nd was what we --
That's what we said.
Second.
Probably motion to second in the discussion. Not all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Resolutions held over. 01287, authorized agreement with Mobile County Airbus Americas and Mobile Airport Authority for Arlington Park Dock dredging project.
Still moved? Second.
Probably motion to second in the discussion. If not, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
21288, authorized contract with Belco to replace flooring at the Tapia Fire Station.
Still move? Second.
In the discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item passes.
Ordinance is being introduced, that's right. Ordinance is being introduced for the first time, 64-009. time, 64-009.
This ordinance will live one week by council rules.
Consent resolutions being introduced, number 37-290 through 58-309.
Motion to suspend the rules for meeting consideration of resolutions 37-290 through 58-309.
Second.
Probably motion and second in the discussion. If not all in favor, aye opposed.
Resolution 37-290 and 291 recommend approval.
Just, 291 by itself.
Just, okay, excuse me. 37-290 Recommend Approval to the ABC Board for Issuance of a Restaurant Retail Liquor License for Judy's Place on Government Boulevard.
Some of.
Probably motion and second in the discussion. If not all in favor, aye opposed, item passes.
37-291 Recommend Approval to the ABC Board for Issuance of a Restaurant Retail Liquor License for the Ruby's Liquor Cafe on Royal Street.
Motion level one week.
Second.
Probably motion and second in the discussion. If not all in favor, aye opposed, item is laid over one week.
You can get the rest.
Okay. 42-92 through 43-08 Fixed Costs for Demolition of Structures at 308 Dunbar Street, 688 Whitney Street, 120 Michael Donald Avenue, 613 Crawford Lane, 7248 Street, 1205 Peabody Drive, 6901 Chapman Road, 511 Marine Street, 1011 Jesse Street, 1350B St. Stevens Road, 252 1/2 Cuba Street, 305 Clay Street, 310 Dunbar Street, 2907 Frederick Street, 1329 Congress Street, 416 Driver Street, and 410 Driver Street, fixing costs for demolition of structures at these addresses.
Some of.
Second.
Probably motion and second in the discussion. If not all in favor, aye opposed.
58-309 Assess Costs for Removal of Weeds Repeat Weed Leading Group 19.
Some of.
Second.
In the discussion, all in favor, aye opposed, item passes.
CIP resolutions being introduced, number 21-310 through 21-312.
Motion to suspend the rules for meeting consideration of resolutions 21-310 and 311.
Oh, 311.
311 is going to lay over.
We were going to lay that over.
We have to.
We got the motion to.
You're right. Go ahead, Don. Go ahead.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Probably motion and second in the discussion. If not all in favor, aye opposed. Yes, sir.
21-310 Authorized Contract with Harris Contracting Services for Medal of Honor Park Pole Replacement Field C.
Some move? Second.
In the discussion, if not all in favor, aye opposed, item passes.
21-311 Authorized Contract with Burke Klein Peter for 2018 CIP Citywide Miscellaneous Drainage Repairs Group B.
Motion. Motion to lay over on May 27th.
Second.
Probably motion and second in the discussion. If not all in favor, aye opposed, item is laid over.
21-312 Authorized Contract with Mycor Doing Business MDS Construction for Denton Park New Walking Trail and Lighting.
That's by council rules, this one.
Oh, that's low end, okay. Call for Public Hearing Scheduled for May 15th. 41-313 Call for Public Hearing to Approve the Application of Doral A. Edwards and Dana Marie Jolly Edwards Doing Business as Angel Wings Lift Service for Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity to Operate a Shell Service.
Second.
Probably motion and second in the discussion. If not all in favor, aye opposed, public hearings called.
Announcements?
Mr. Williams?
Thank you very much. I was questioned the other day on what I was doing on my phone during a council meeting. And what I'm doing on my phone is the same thing most of the council members are doing on their iPad, and that is following along on our agenda. It is where we have our electronic agenda. And so I sometimes just like to let everybody know that, that I do my absolute very best to pay attention to every person who speaks here. And if at any time, it's fair game, call me out. If you have a question on what I was doing, where I was, that's all fair questions, and I'll respond immediately. The, oh, there was an issue brought up today. It was stated that there were existing personnel issues. And while we can be voices, we cannot be attorneys, and we cannot intervene directly with those administrative matters, those personnel matters. We are prohibited by law. But as I have told the people who have called me, that their issue is with the administration. Their issue can be handled in two ways. It can be taken formally to the Personnel Board, and if that does not achieve their desires, they can use the legal means and through some sort of court action. But by coming here, if that is what they believe can, anybody has the right to come here. But I will just tell you that the best results are through the formal systems. It is simply is, it's just as simple as that. And I wish there was a way that this council could simply snap its fingers and make all personnel matters right. But there's a good reason why this seven-member board is prohibited from doing certain things within the city, and we have to respect the law. So I'm not closing the door, I'm just simply saying that if there's some way that we can be helpful on other things, we certainly are ready to do that, but we can't stand here and make you believe that we can help you with personnel issues when we really can't. Thank you.
Mrs. Grant. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This past Friday, we had the annual Sidewalk-a-thon in the Village of Spring Hill. This is where the children raise money, and we get sponsors, or they get sponsors, to help match new sidewalk projects. I was able to attend along with County Commissioner Connie Hudson. A great turnout, as always, thanks to everyone who participated, who raised money, and we look forward to seeing more sidewalks built, thanks to the funds that are raised in this neighborhood. I also want to make sure that everybody knows about the Cuba Festival, which will be Saturday at the Mobile Museum of Art from 10 until 5:00. This will be celebrating the shared cultures of Mobile and our sister city of Havana, Cuba. You will get to enjoy Cuban culture, and also Common Ground, which is a photographic exhibit. Again, that's from 10 until 5:00 at the Mobile Museum of Art. It will be terrific. Please try to go out and see this. And the mayor beat me to the punch on Market in the Park. That doesn't start until May 31st, but it will be at Lavreta Park on Old Shell Road from May 31st through July 28th, from 3:00 until 6:00. This is a terrific opportunity to stay out in West Mobile, if that's where you live, or if you'd want to come visit, please do, to find your fresh fruit, vegetables, flowers, other types of goods that people bring out, fresh soaps and that sort of thing. So come on out and enjoy, again, Market in the Park, Lavreta Park, May 31st through July 28th, from 3:00 until 6:00. And that will do it for me, Mr. Vice President.
Mrs. Rich.
Thank you very much. I would just like to announce that there's a new foundation in town, and it's called the Justin Villa Foundation. And this is started by his widow, his wife Erin, and she is having a function out at Medal of Honor Park on Sunday, May 20th, from 12:00 into 3:00. This is a free event. She'll have games and festivities out there, and I hope that the community will come, because she also has something in mind that she'd like to see people support, and that is to put stuffed animals and toys in every police car, so that they can, when a police officer engages a child or has an event where there are children, they are able to present these to these children, to give them a different sense of policing in our town. Her husband was a proponent of this. He, of course, is the officer who lost his life. And so, again, this is May 20th, it's a Sunday, from noon until 3:00 at Medal of Honor Park, and I hope that you'll put that on your calendar and come out and join us. Thank you.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. To those citizens living near Dome Street in Creighton, Dome Street is a street running parallel to Osher Road, and it's just south of Florida Street. It's a major drainage issue up there, and we've been working on that for years. I finally got enough money to correct that problem, and we've gotten our bids back, and work should start in a matter of weeks. So a number of travelers going to be inconvenienced. The street will not be closed, but they will be, they're going to work one side of the street first, and then they're going to work the other side of the street. But they're going to have to lay new pipe in the street, in Florida Street, from Dome Street to Dolphin Street. That's about three blocks. So we're going, but it's going to correct the drainage in that area. So for citizens living down that corridor, I want you to know you waited long enough, it is coming. For those traveling that route, be patient with us, and when it's finished, Florida Street is going to be like new from Springfield Avenue to Dolphin Street, striping the whole thing. We waited until we did Publix first, and we done Dome Street second, we had the money, but we didn't want to tie up the whole street from Springfield to Dolphin at one time. Okay, so we would be holding our community meeting for residents of Moffett Road, Thursday, May 17th, at the Forest Hill Elementary School at 6:00. And we will be talking a lot about jobs. We'll have a number of companies in the house offering jobs, including the Mobile Fire Department. They have a new recruiter, the new recruiter will be in the house recruiting people that would like to be a firefighter. So we've also had indications that citizens of Moffett Road would like to have a CAD group. So we're going to have people from the police department to help them to organize a community action group of Moffett Road. Ms. Anton talked about creeks that she didn't know whether they existed, that she heard of Pritch Creek. I have spent the money to order signs to identify every creek in District One. That ought to happen by Thursday this week. The signs ought to be up. When you, if you're driving on a city street in District One, and you cross any kind of tributary, creek, branch, or whatever, if you cross it, it's going to have the name of the tributary on the street. This ought to happen this week. So I've been waiting a long time for this. It is coming. You should know when you get to Three Mile Creek, that you're at Three Mile Creek. When you get to Eight Mile Creek, Toman Branch, you ought to know when you get there. So look out, look at the new signs, and I hope there be something that other council districts will pick up, so we would know where all of the creeks are in the city of Mobile.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I just, I'll conclude by making my stand, remarks, that I have not been in a position to hold a community meeting for these first five months, but slowly but surely, recuperation is working, and I hope to, in the month of June, have a series of community meetings so that we can continue to hear from citizens across the length and breadth of District Two in the interim. Please contact me at (251) 509-4239, by email, by Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. I've even had them come by the house, come by the church. I'm not running from citizens of District Two. If you have an issue, please let me know, so that we can get it over to the appropriate branch of the administration. I want to recognize Pastor Dr. W. A. James. This month, he will be celebrating his fourth anniversary, along with the church's fourth anniversary, at the Grace and Truth Christian Church and right on the avenue. And we thank God for all that he's been doing in that community, and for his continued vigilance on the spiritual battlefield. Just wanted to recognize that that will be occurring on May the 20th. And while he's here, I wanted to, at 4:00 p.m., wanted to give him his flowers while he can hear him, see him, smell him, let him know that we do appreciate all that you've done, and will continue to do in our community. Happy to see our representatives from the Mobile County School System, Dr. Carroll and Mrs. Roberts. I happy to see both of you all, and thank you for all that you do by way of education. Any other comments?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, I would just inform, let me say that I invited the Walmart Distribution Center to come and talk about jobs. I've been, I've been there. They have hundreds of employees out there. They, I just got the word, they elected to come. I would have a representative at my meeting of Moffett Road, I would have a representative from the Walmart Distribution Center coming to tell the citizens how they can get a job at that new distribution center.
Yes, sir. Any further comments from the council, administration? If not, are you a motion?
Some move.
Probably motion and second in the discussion, if not all in favor?
Aye.
Means adjutant.